We have your attention, this is the box, so we go ahead and start this meeting. Um, I'd like to, uh, call the lady Gorder, and I'd also like to welcome all the ministers here tonight. Thank you for coming. Um, and, uh, so at this time, if you would, would you call the role for me?
I'm sure we don't. Trevor.
Here.
Christie.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Rodney.
Yeah.
And Mitzi.
Here.
And all of David is out there.
Okay. Uh, first thing on the agenda is the minutes from the, uh, January twenty ninth council meeting. Uh, I think y'all have already had those. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, hold on. I got ahead of my flip here. Also got Willis, our, uh, pastor, Reverend Mike Butler. He's here to lead us in opening prayer.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for our mayor, we thank you for the city council, and the leaders at every level in our city. Give them the grace to bring truth, justice, and stability to our region. Give them power to do what is right and rule in fairness. And may our community be known as much for how we do things as what we do. In the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you. Um, okay, back to the minutes on the agenda here. On the minutes, uh, from the January twenty ninth meeting, four point four council meeting. Um, y'all all been provided a copy of those in advance. Um, I hear a motion that we accept the minutes from that meeting.
I make a motion to accept. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Trevor.
Yes.
Um, Dennis.
Yes.
And Rodney.
Yeah. Um, also, we've been provided the financials from the January twenty twenty four. Um, and, um, we have a profit loss detail sheet that, uh, is in that airport village that we own. And so we had that, uh, to look over. Uh, I hear a motion that we accept those financials.
I got a question before we go through it. Um, are we, are we finished with SAGA instruction? And that's an energy.
We have had a closing, I guess you'd say, with the DECA, but we're not completely done because there, there was some, we've got some other billions coming. And all that has to go through a DECA first, and then it comes to us. So there is some other billing that's coming, but basically, they have, it's a closeout type thing, you know? We've done, they'll have a public hearing like that, and, uh, that's been done.
The CSI, what, what computer system is that?
That's our, um, they have all our, um, internet.
That's what I knew was some type of computer. Is that twelve forty seven, is that gonna be a monthly charge? Cause I, I couldn't find, I mean, I didn't have a chance to go back and get my last.
That was November and December.
I, I saw that, and then.
And then it looks like January was without.
Trevor, you'll have to get, what's my, I don't recall.
I tried, you know, she just, she was busy today.
Okay.
I didn't get a call. I looked, but I didn't.
Okay, it went to voice now, so.
Okay.
I didn't get a call today.
Okay.
No, I called you on your cell phone.
I didn't get it.
I got it, it went to voice. It's fine.
No, it didn't, I looked. I, I didn't get a call.
We're not even talking about a phone call, I'm just sitting here saying, I'm just curious about this. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So it's two in January. Is one for four oh seven and one for six twenty five?
It's normally six twenty five. We had to have some work done down at Center Center and up here during the move, and for some reason, some of the invoices were not here. So they sent it in, and we've just been go, seriously been catching up every single month. But it should be six twenty five per month, or about that average.
For both places here and there together?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can we on the next meeting have like a balance, like a, like a balance on our accounts? I know we have, uh, we limited our accounts, we did away with some accounts, or consolidated. But can we get a balance that, that we have, so I can be able to know how much money we have?
We did that on the first, I did that last month, and that wasn't the report that we wanted. So this is the detailed report.
I, I like the detailed report. I always like to have a balance of what's like in the general fund, a balance in the senior fund, a balance in the police fund, and special roads, and, you know, all the other accounts that we have.
That's ten more reports.
Well, I, okay, I, I'd like to know the balance, cause that's what I go with on a monthly basis on. Because I can see where we spent, and I know we spent out more than we took in. So therefore, I want to keep up like with the monthly, this is February. I like to compare apples to apples on a monthly basis of the, of the monies in our accounts.
Well, what QuickBooks does is it will consider what you have, like if I run a report and say, here's your balance, it will also tell you, like it will consider what I've already written checks out for this month. So it's not gonna be a true assessment of where you are at that point. Like if you wanna do just January financials, then you gotta look at that.
I, and it's never been spot on, I understand that, but at least give me the ballpark. Am I asking something that's?
We used to get those.
I mean.
We used to get them like from the bank.
Cause when I did, I go home in between the meetings, and I keep up with it on just a, like from January meeting, you know, if we have, I don't know, say a hundred thousand dollars in a certain account, and then I look back at the end of February after my meeting, the week two to two or three days after, I go in and I write it down. And it gives me an idea of where we're spending and how much is here.
It's, it's ten reports. If y'all want ten reports, that's what we'll do.
Just email them to me if nobody else wants them, please. I can print them. And gives me an idea of what's, what we have. I can't speak for them, but.
But some of the reports would be very short.
Well, they're just, a report's a report to me. I don't mind running it. I just need to know that that's what y'all want in your emails.
And this is good. I like, I mean, this, this is good. I just wanna know how much money we got. Cause right now, someone must've asked me, how much money does the city have? I don't have a clue, but I gotta go back to what, December and April meeting. And then I'll just be a guest, and I, and I play. I tell them, this is all like the last time I was presented.
Okay. Anything else?
I mean, I'll make a motion to accept this.
Okay. Got a motion, we have a second.
Christie.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yeah.
Mitzi.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, now we're going to, we got, um, about four different ones that's on the agenda. The first one up is Andrew Pierce, on behalf of the rent department, on the proposal. So Andrew, if you'll, uh, go ahead and give us a.
I've got it printed out for y'all.
Okay.
Andrew, can I have one? In that way I can make my notes, and that'll make it into a minutes. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you prefer me to sit down, or stand up, or?
Whatever you know, whatever it might feel good.
Is that the chair? Is that the chair?
Yeah, it's right there.
Thank you. So first off, uh, thank you for just the opportunity to be here, um, to talk about it, just to have open dialogue and a conversation. Uh, thank you for, let me do another thank you. Uh, thank you for the, the land that we're working on clearing over there right now. Uh, I wanted to say that publicly in front of everyone here. Uh, we, we as a board in the rec, we, uh, we appreciate the support from the town in, um, giving us that, so we can have some more practice space. Uh, this, this is gonna take a ton of time, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, we, we just wanna talk about the land across the street from my house, uh, and right by you, Trevor. Um, the plans for that, what we think we can use it for, and of course, what it can do for the town. Uh, we, we spent a lot of time talking about, you know, what it means to the kids, and what it means to us, and what it means to sports. But as soon as I came in, I'm starting to look at, look at it a different way of what it can do for the town. Um, and being an outsider, coming in here and seeing what the future looks like in Ramburn in ways that we will grow, um, healthily. Um, I came from Villarica, and that's not a healthy growth. It's a, it's an alarming growth. And it's a little scary, that's why we moved out here. Um, but we should recognize that we will one day grow. So how do we get there? Uh, I, I mean, I drove, I drove through here just going to Barn of Blooms, and immediately fell in love with the place. You know, just the rolling hills of it, just the small town atmosphere is really cool. Um, and we were locked in the second we came through. And so if I'm thinking as a parent, and if we have different facilities here, better facilities, and we're coming, we're, we're hosting tournaments, and we have more people coming from West Georgia, um, and they can see what Ramburn has to offer, there will be more of me. You know, it's like, well, this is nice, and then you, there's not a lot of houses here to buy, so you're gonna have to build, you're gonna have to buy some land. You know, as more people come, and then we open the door for small businesses to come through. Um, and really, when you look at it, like, who, this is about to sound bad, but as a town, like what else do we have going for us if not the sports organization? Um, and that's, that's a cool spot to be in for us, um, to what we can be in the future. Um, but I know we can't do it without you guys, without the town. Um, and that's something going forward that we wanted to, and I know I've talked to a couple of you about kinda what's happened in the past. Um, we've let all that go, we're moving forward. Um, we know we need you for the growth of this organization. And just thank you for the time just to talk through it again. Uh, it means a lot to me personally. I was supposed to be in Vegas right now for work. Uh, I'm missing my company-wide dinner. I have Ruth Chris taking out, just sitting here nervously giving you this pitch. So, no, it means a lot. Um, and so I'll just go through it here for everybody here in the room. I know we have it right in front of us. Um, and this is part, Samantha, I'll probably connect with you afterwards to see what exactly is left on the loan, um, over there across the street. Uh, the last number I was given was fifty-four thousand. Um, the monthly payment on that is fifteen hundred per month. Um, and so when I look at a need of the town, you know, I, we wanna relieve that monthly payment. And I know, Trevor, we've talked about kinda what you guys have been putting into, um, but just a quick fix for the town is to take that, take that burden of that payment off. And we would take it fully into the, into the rec board, and we would pay that monthly. Um, I know there's a lot of legalities that would come with it, we wanna make sure we do it the right way. The purpose of today is really just to start the discussion. I don't expect anything to be signed or voted on, or anything like that. We wanna make sure we do it the right way. Um, and sitting in one of these meetings a few months ago, there was some talk about police jurisdiction money, and how we're gonna make up some of those funds. And so when we're thinking of ways that we can help the town, we can fill that need too. So we wanna throw in a twenty thousand dollar lump sum that goes straight to the town, not to the loan, that you can use and real, reallocate to fill that void that was left there. Uh, and then we continue to pay on the loan until the property is paid off, and then it will be signed over to the organization. Uh, obviously, I mean, we're all, then being this, this is all, uh, common, common sense, common, common knowledge of what land is going for right now. Um, obviously, this is a proposal just of, just good faith that we're asking from the town, um, with hopes in the future that it does grow. Um, our town does grow, and it brings more revenue, more tax dollars into the city. Um, and this is a real short-term plan, but, uh, we as a group believe that we can get at least two practice baseball and softball fields up by spring of next year. So this is, I mean, I'll be around forever. I've got a million children, and they're all babies. So, um, I'll be around for a while, but we do wanna see this come to fruition. And I know for everybody that's involved, like Rodney, you're, you're rolling off soon, like you'll be able to see this, a couple ballfields go up, and we'll be able to have some kids over there practicing. Um, cause man, we just need, we're just out of space, uh, where we are currently. And so that, that's it in a nutshell. Um, again, it, it means everything for, for my kids, for all the kids involved, but I really believe wholeheartedly that it's a key cog to the growth of this town. Um, and that we can grow it in a healthy way, uh, through sports and through the families, um, at the end of the day. Um, you know, I didn't know, and I'm trying not to make it all about me, but I had no idea what Ramburn was, like, at all. Like I didn't know what, sorry, Cole, I didn't know what Barn of Blooms was. I didn't know what all, any of this stuff was, and my wife forced me out here, and it was the best move of our lives. And so I know if we, there's a bunch of me's out there in Villarica and Carroll County that don't know how beautiful this place is, that if we can just bring them here with the facilities, um, just to see it, just to look around and see these people in this town, uh, they'll come to. So that's it. I know I went over three minutes, but.
That's mine. I appreciate it. Appreciate you speaking to us and doing your proposal. Uh, we will have to take this up naturally.
Yeah.
We'll have to take this up, um, the council, we'll have to, uh, make sure that we're doing everything correctly. And so we'll have some discussion about that later.
Okay. And if you have any questions today, we're here to answer any of them. Um, and if not, you, you know where to find us, and we can, we can keep this discussion ongoing.
I don't know Rodney, Dennis, Mitzi, y'all may know, cause y'all, I haven't been here as long as y'all have. How many acres is that?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Does that seventeen include the, the few that we just bought?
Yeah, they, they, this, we got thirteen, then we bought the other four, uh, since I've been off, I think it's twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty-two, somewhere along the way.
And did we lump all that into one?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was fun.
The next one that's on the agenda is Tammy Perry. Uh, she's within Southern County Council Board. And Tammy's gonna talk to us about True Brands and tax abatement proposal.
Okay. Um, first of all, I wanted to speak just a little bit about True Brand. Um, I hope most of you know about True Brand. I hope, um, that if you don't, you do try to learn more about True Brand. You've got a real gem here in your community. Um, you know, in, in what they're doing and where they've come, from sixteen to now is amazing. And that's what brings me here is, um, their expansion, sixty thousand square foot expansion building. Um, standard our equipment, the most advanced piece of equipment in South and North America. Um, and it's right here in Clifford County, and in Ramburn. Um, and they are, gosh, twenty-five, they're, the plans are to add twenty-five employees a year. And they have seventy-six right now. And I'm not sure if you know about employers across the county, but that's a lot of employees for, for a business in Clifford County. Um, and they're, you know, and the way I, I describe them a lot is, you know, that they're very, very competitive with Southwire. Their, their benefit package, their starting wages, fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour. And to see where, who has moved up already, and, um, Jason, for instance, you know, um, he's, he's moved up, and now he's, he should have his own plane, because he's flying somewhere all the time. So, uh, but Mike and Jason, I hope both of you know them. Um, like I said, if, if you don't get to know them, um, go tour the plant. Uh, the plant is amazing, and they are open for tours. Just let them know it's open door policy. I popped in all them several days. And, um, it's just really, really amazing what they do. They have had a few hiccups, and it's why, you know, I really think this is, this abatement is so important um, in building their new building and their future building, which the plan for that is gonna be eighty thousand square foot building. Um, so that's a lot of expansion for Ramburn. But their, um, the water system would not support the fire suppression system. So outside of their budget, they were, are being forced to spend about seven hundred fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars on a water tank, which we are trying to help them with that. Um, we're trying to secure some funds with, um, a DECA, and then I'm looking at a grant right now with USDA, um, which I was real pleased to see that, um, the water department here, they have updated audits and can supply me with their financials for the last three years. And that was very encouraging, because you have to have that in order to apply for the USDA grant. So they will supply that, um, to try to get this grant. So we're trying to help them get some money, but it's naturally, probably will not pay for the whole water tank. So we're gonna, we're just trying to help them and, um, try to get some abatements for their upcoming project. And, you know, this is the third abatement. I know you, some of you have had questions and, you know, which, yes, it is, but yes, that means how much growth has happened in the last three years, and, and the growth that's about to happen. Um, they currently have, did I say this already? You currently have seventy-six employees. Um, fifty-one of those are from Alabama. That really surprised me. As close as they are to the line, that's, that's very encouraging to me, because that means they're coming back here to spend money. Um, they're, they're staying in this direction. So that does nothing but help, help, you know, your community. Let's see, um, trying to think. I know that I've met with, talked with several of you, met with several of you. Um, I'm working on, still working on a few of the, the things that we talked about. Um, True Brands is willing to discuss a compromise, um, so they're willing to discuss that. And I, I talked to Mr. Brown, and I told him, you know, I think you're planning a work session really soon, I'm willing to come back. And, you know, let's discuss a little further on that. So, you know, Ramburn gets a little, you know, and then, but yet we're still helping True, True Brand move on. Um, I don't know, I think it's really in the place for questions, I don't think. I don't know, if you guys have any that I, did you wanna say anything that I may have left out? I was trying to do a real quick.
No, you, you've covered. I mean, anything we can answer, we welcome anybody to come up there.
Okay.
Just call us, let us know. I have cards, I can leave them if anybody wants to call me. You know, whatever questions you have, we can sit down and discuss when we're not taking up everybody's time.
Okay.
And I have supplied everyone with the tax analysis. I'm still learning, I told you all this, you know, I'm still learning. This is the only second abatement I've had in three years. You know, it's not something we do a lot, because we don't have a lot of manufacturing industry that are expanding. You know, so this says a lot that, you know, that, that we do have a business that is, is expanding to that, to those lengths. Um, but you've all, if you don't have my cell number or my email, reach out, and, um, if you get questions about that, we're learning together, and we'll, we'll figure it all out.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy. Okay. Next on the agenda, um, for, um, just please to us for a minute, is Josh Colwell. I might know Josh, I guess, hopefully. And he got a proposal for us for the old police department city hall.
Guys, everybody that doesn't know me, I'm Josh Colwell. Um, most people do know me from RP RN, been doing that, love it. Um, that doesn't pay the bills. What I actually do for a living is work with First Class Roofing and Solar. And First Class Roofing and Solar was, um, born in Georgia, um, very successful in Georgia. I came on board and opened up a, uh, section in Alabama, and it has exploded. It's, it's been very, very good. Um, probably doing as much, if not more, work in Alabama than we did in Georgia. Uh, that being said, our current office is in Atlanta, right? We need a storefront here in Alabama. Um, and when we were talking about it the other day, I was like, hey, I would love to bring it to Ramburn. Um, do some immediate hiring. We need a project manager now, and we always need sales positions. Um, always need sales positions. Always need, like, roofers. Um, not only do we do roofing, we also do, um, remodeling, we call it like zombie houses or what have you. So that would also fall into, um, maybe helping some of the local real estate thing, as far as, you know, it's, it's a growing, uh, there's, there's a lot of growth here, a lot of growth and potential. Um, I wasn't really gonna speak a lot, I was more gonna introduce Josh to this, uh, to y'all. Um, heck of an entrepreneur here, and we wanna bring this again to Ramburn. We understand that the building's in pretty bad disrepair over there, so, and that's fine, cause like I said, we're in the restoration business also. We can, we can, we can fix that, if we can get it at a decent price, as far as. So I was just gauging the interest, wanting to buy that building over there. Um, not wanting to pay a ton for it on the kind of, it's gonna take a ton to get it to where it needs to be. Um, and I mean, that's, that's it. Again, this is Josh Jones. Uh, I think he won his, all right, uh, for him to say a couple things?
Yes, for sure. All right, Josh. Yeah, um, so yeah, we're looking to put an office over here in Ramburn in the old police station, correct? Um, spruce up the place, and, um, it would make good logistical sense for us to put it either here in Ramburn or Hefflin, just because most of our jobs are within an hour and a half from here. So ideally, we wanna keep it in Ramburn mostly, uh, due to Josh's influence here. And I believe it'd be really good for the town. I'm also from Villarica, Temple School District, though, so it's a little bit different. Um, we're looking to move here, relocate here as well in the future. Um, so like Josh said, we already got one position that's gonna open up, that we wanna give to somebody in Ramburn, um, if anybody's interested. And if you guys know anybody who may be interested, reach out to Josh here. We're currently accepting applications. Um, second part of that is, uh, we would like to, you know, in Temple, we contribute to the local rec departments. We'd like to bring some of that here too, hopefully help out some of the, you know, work with some of the local small businesses, work with the local sports organizations. Um, we want, we want all the banners we can get, you know? Um, if you guys got any questions, reach out to Josh here or myself.
Hey, that's what we're saying is, uh, it is a big business. We're a multi-million dollar business. We do a lot of money. Um, and I mean, with that, I don't know how the tax breaks, by, breaks down on that, I'm not an accountant. Um, but there would be some there also. Um, so, and again, giving high-paying jobs to local people. I mean, when I'm talking high-paying jobs, I'm talking about, uh, life-changing jobs to some of the local people. Um, and that is, that's what we've got to offer. Again, I don't want it in Hefflin. I, I've been pretty adamant with Josh. I do not, like, Hefflin's got enough. I want it in Ramburn.
Tammy. I love it, I do.
Yeah, but at the same time, I mean, it's gotta make, it, it probably makes more financial sense for us to put it in Hefflin just on account of the, the, they've got more people, uh, more traffic that would see it, all that deal. But I, I wanna see Ramburn grow. Um, it's basically, it's, it's in y'all's hands. Um, we need an address. Um, we need to spruce it up. We need to, uh, just a storefront. Won't be a whole lot of, uh, day-to-day that goes on over there. Um, but we have to have a physical address for people to send checks to, because literally, me and Josh went and picked up a bunch of checks from, um, Atlanta. Was it three, four days ago?
Yeah, it was like.
Cost both of us time that we could be out selling, so like, literally, it could've cost the company forty, fifty thousand dollars, just us two being out there, giving our day away. So, uh.
What's the name of the business?
First Class Roofing. First-class roofing and solar. Look us up. We got some pretty, pretty funny stuff out there. It's uh, you gotta, you gotta do things to make yourself stand out. Um, Josh is crazy on TikTok as far as uh, getting that. And that might be the reason why we have such huge explosion in, in growth. But um, I do want to see this taken to the next level. We have already taken it to the next level coming over into Alabama. Um, and I wanna, I mean, if I'm over Alabama, I want to be Jordan, you know, just like. We'll, we'll break this thing down into, into college football if y'all want to, but it's in me to make it to grow. So uh, I mean, that's, that's what we've got. Um, and again, open that up for conversation. I would, I would like to purchase the uh, the building over there. Spruce it up. It's got some bad undermining going on over there, which is causing the cracks. Uh, it needs fixing immediately. Um, but again, we uh, we have the knowledge to do it. We have the funds to do it. We wanna, we wanna do it. We just gotta get it at the right price.
Okay. Naturally, like I said, we would have to do this in a work session. We discussed.
Yes.
Decide, you know, we have legal issues we have to deal with as well. So uh, we will make sure we do it correctly to protect y'all and protect us too.
No doubt, hey, no doubt. But uh, it's alright, I'm gonna go ahead and uh, and continue on with the hiring process because I gotta get somebody in mind. And I would like to get the uh.
Do y'all have a starting offer or?
Oh, it's kinda, we're touching with that as far as the, we um, of course, we want to get it as, as, as cheap as possible, but we're not, we do not want to hand out. Um, we're somewhere around the, I mean, if y'all want to get it to us, by all means, but right, I mean, y'all want, we're somewhere around the. How long? Ten thousand dollar range, just on account of some, we're fifty thousand dollars in right one first star. Um, just for a, a spec of land that, hey, otherwise is, is kinda, you can use it as a jail or that's about it. I mean, there's. There's, yeah, the way the, the way the land is over there, it's locked in. It's not real usable. Um, but it would do very well for a uh, an office that checks get mailed to and you know. Then again, local support for raids, um, local support for the high school. Um, trying to, again, we flip houses. There, it's a lot of things that, that uh, that we can put back out into the community. Alright, that's what I got.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, this time for a forty now and this time I'm gonna ask uh, Chief Barry Allen to come up and give us a forty.
I'm a little confused over playing on y'all's job, but. This last month, we ran approximately, I didn't get the total figures from dispatch. You never emailed me the um, exact figure, but. We ran approximately twenty calls this uh, last month, around five reports. From fifteen traffic stops and three citations and. And we were able this past weekend to do a PT test on the applicants that had applied for the other police officer's job. We had four that applied, but two backed out last week right at the last minute and one said he got hurt. One unable to do the PT and one had got a new job, so he wasn't interested no more. So we was able to do the PT test and have one to pass, which is Jeremy Brown sitting in the corner over there. He's a former medic for the Cleveland County, so he's, he knows Cleveland County and he's, he's from Fruit Hills area. So um, we're in the process right now, doing a background check on him and doing everything that we've got to do in a fine state. To do whatever we gotta do to get him hired in. Uh, my plans is to try to get him hired in, to get him in the next available academy, which would be May, so we can get him on the road as quick as possible. And I think the academy starts like May the sixth or something like that and goes through August or last week of July or something like that. And he would be graduated and be able to hit the road and all. Uh, so that's where we're at with that, with the hiring process of trying to get another officer to help out, to be here full-time. Then we've had, a couple weeks ago, we took the Tahoe. Uh, I put, went and put a new battery on it. Got it to partially run, except that it has times where it don't want to crank. So we took it to have the dog kennel taken out of it, to put the cage back in so that he would have one to drive whenever we hired a new officer. They thought they had it all fixed. They fixed a ground, suppose it had a bad ground and it had something under the dash that was drawing constantly on the battery. So they fixed that. They got in it to bring it back Monday, or Friday and it won't crank again. So now we're back to trying to figure out what's going on with it. But as I was there picking up the dog kennel to bring it back, um, I stopped by on my way into my regular job and picked it up. They told me they had some Tahos that they had just purchased from another police department. Twenty-twenty-one Tahos that, that were available for purchase if we was interested in any of them. So um, I, I asked them about them, talked to them about them. They said they would probably go quick because they were just in the cop, chief's conference in Montgomery this last week. And they were all looking for, everybody was looking for Tahos. And these Tahos range from anywhere from twenty-five thousand miles to forty-eight thousand miles on them, the twenty-one models. And I got them to give me estimates on them, um, what they would take, what they would give us for our vehicle. And what they, what it would cost us to buy one of them. Two, I got the estimate for one, it was uh, I think it had twenty-five thousand miles on it and I think it was like. The estimate's twenty-six thousand dollars, or the quote, twenty-six thousand dollars is what they'll set up to us for. The other one was twenty-five thousand and it's got thirty-six thousand miles on it. So one of them's got, one of them's got twenty-eight, six, fifty-seven, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-seven miles on it. The other one's got, I think it was thirty-six, something. Thirty-six, nine, twenty-seven.
How much did they offer you that one for a beer? I missed that. The thirty-six thousand, when it's got thirty-six thousand?
It's twenty-five thousand. Thousand dollars difference in them.
Okay.
Um, it's twenty-five, thirty-four was the price on it. The other one was twenty-six, seventy-seven, the price on it.
And they said it had twenty, how many miles on it? Twenty-six thousand?
Twenty-eight thousand, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-seven.
Twenty-eight thousand, okay, thanks.
Yeah. They said they would probably go quick because they, like I said, everybody at the conference was wanting them and stuff, but. But I just asked them if, if that was a way we wanted to go because this cop Tahoe is constantly giving us problems. And we gotta have something that's gonna be dependable because he don't have to drive back and forth to the academy every week. And also we gotta have something that's dependable. And of course, you don't want to get out here and try to go to a car and you can't get one to crank, you know, that's, it's a bad situ- situation to be in. But um, that's just something that I looked at while I was there. They, they had them available because I have, I have done some studying on buying a brand new one. A brand new Tahoe is forty-nine thousand dollars and you can't get one. There, the twenty-fours is sold out. The spores are sold out for twenty-fours. I could possibly not get a truck like mine, but it's forty-six thousand dollars. Like the Ford truck, I could possibly get one of them pretty quick. Ford place told me, um, uh, police truck, police package, you know, but that's, that's forty-six thousand just for the truck. And then you gotta put everything on it, you know, and everything. Of course, these do not have nothing on them neither. It'll be another twelve to, I asked the guy, another twelve to fifteen thousand to equip it. Of course, we're gonna use what we can out of the old Tahoe, if that's something y'all are willing to do. Well, um, like radios, radio is a big expense, but they will use the radio and all that stuff out of the old Tahoe to put into the new Tahoe. Everything that we can use out of the old Tahoe, we will use in the new Tahoe. Like lights and stuff is different, so they, they can't use them and, and stuff, uh, the different. Windshield's a little different and stuff. He said he couldn't really use them, but uh, and all, but. That's something on the vehicle, but that's something that's, I mean, they, they've got them right now. They got, I think they said they had six white ones and. And uh, one black one and they range from, well, them was the two mid ones. Well, there's one that had a little less miles than that one and it was a couple thousand more. But that's, that's basically the price range it'll be. And then me and Daniel was also able to attend the taser and body camera show at Tuscaloosa Sheriff's Department this last, a few weeks ago. We got to check out all the new gadgets that tasers come out with, the new taser and, and, and all that, because we're gonna need one more taser. The new one's nice, but we won't, we'll, we'll stick with the ones that we got and then the body, I want to get us all body cameras. Because we, this is my personal, I bought this myself. We have no body cameras really here. I bought this one myself, but um, I want to get some for our officers because that's, I mean, anybody can say anything about what you've done on the side of the road. If you got video, it's hard to, it's hard to fight against video. You know, so we were able to talk to them about the bo- body cams and stuff, but we're looking, we're gonna try to look into maybe. See if we can get a grant to get body cameras and stuff. I've then got a quote on them. It's like sixteen thousand dollars for four body cameras and then two thousand dollars for one more taser. Uh, and all, but uh, that's something I've looked into this last month also. Also, I had talked to Samantha about the finances as far as the police department on the vehicle, as far as if we was even able to, you know. Able, if that's even something we're able to do, but. But I just want to present it to you and let you know that it is something that we probably need to do pretty quick if we want to get one of those vehicles. Because they'll sell pretty quick and, and all, but that's uh, and also Daniel, he's been with us since D- December. He stayed over tonight, but. He's gotta leave pretty quick. He's our new officer. Been doing a great job for us during the day, taking care of everything for us during the day. Everybody knows I work a full-time job. This is my side job, so. I take care, I take care of the nights. He takes care of the days, so.
Did I miss, what, did they offer you a trade-in? Did they give you a number?
Seventeen thousand.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that.
I didn't tell you.
Okay.
I left, I, I forgot about that. It was seventeen thousand they offered us for the old, the old Tahoe.
Barry, what kind of warranty do these vehicles have?
Well, the one with the, the one that advertises, and I can show you a picture of the vehicle. The one that advertises shows that it comes with a, this one don't show, this is one with a higher mileage. This one with a twenty, uh, five thousand or twenty-six thousand, it actually shows a thirty-day, three hu- three thousand mile warranty and then a lifetime powertrain warranty. So, um, um. So that's the vehicles. You can go on Buster Miles' website and see every one of them. They've got them all on there, but that's, that's the ones that I just done. Just, just to get a figure on what it would cost, you know, I just wanted to get around about a figure to present you this stuff and, and everything, but. But if it's like the regular vehicles, I know I just purchased one from them back last year, year ago. I didn't come with a lifetime warranty, but I had to finance it through them. That's the, the only way to get the lifetime warranty was financing it through them, so that may not be something that we can do. No, I, I don't know. That's about all that I have, unless y'all got something.
Okay, Barry. Well, thank you so much. Okay, Nick, we got uh, seniors under management, passion will.
Well, I have a report in front of you. The month of February, we had twenty servant days. Between the four of the seniors at the senior center that are congregants, they volunteered a total of thirty-six hours for the month of February. That's just little things like, um, Randy brought his pressure washer up there, pressure washed our vehicles for us, um. Cleaned our tables real good, just little, small things like that, but it, but it adds up and it's wonderful help. Um, I listed on there the nutrition education that we discussed in February. The um, public education, we had nine speakers or activity coordinators to come. Um, deletions for February, we had one homebound, no congregants. Uh, addition, we added a homebound and added a new congregant and then we added. Um, we renewed one homebound and four congregants for the month of February. Uh, we took two outings on the bus. Actually, one was in the black truck because we only had just a handful of seniors that wanted to go. We took the black truck for it and then the bus for the other. On February the fourth, um, Judy Turner, which is our uh, Route Two driver, she quit. So on February the fifteenth, I hired Samantha Simpson to start as our driver for Route Two. Um, I told her on March the fifteenth, which will be a thirty-day after her hire on, we'll sit down and do evaluation with her, all that good stuff. Right now, it's going great. It's going wonderful. Um, February the thirteenth, our Kia, the green car that we were using, I put on there it took its last breath. Motor literally blew up on our sub-driver sitting on side of the road with meals in her vehicle. I had to rush to her. Get all of that taken care of. Um, needless to say, the motors blew up. It's not worth fixing. It's not worth putting any money into it. Um, so it's pretty much scratched that. We are currently using the black Ford truck to deliver meals in. It has two hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four miles on it. And we also have the white Ford car, which has a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one miles on it. Those are as of today, um, that we are currently making deliveries in. I've talked to Samantha as well. That white car definitely gonna have to replace it soon. I drove it last Wednesday. And I thought I was gonna have to call somebody to come pick me up. It's that bad. It's, it's that bad. Um, and then we, of course, had talked about selling the bus and getting just something smaller. Um, fifteen-passenger van. We literally have no more than usually twelve that go with us anywhere. And we just, we don't fill that bus up, so. Um, it's nice. It's wonderful to have, but is it worth us keeping? I, I mean.
If you got the passenger van, could it be used for deliveries?
I, I wouldn't say so, just simply because most of the time when we do take the trips, it is during the middle of the day, which is. Our home, yeah, our homebonds have to be delivered to, yeah. I think that's all I have.
All these vehicles which you've all got here, every one of them is donated to us.
Yeah.
Um, and that's great. Is there any?
That's all I have. Any questions?
Okay, there we go. I'll go to Samantha.
Okay, I'm going to allude to um, what Barry mentioned about the vehicle, the police vehicle. He had asked me to look at the financials this afternoon just real quickly and say, is this something we can or can't do? And when I'm looking at their income, it averages forty-five, forty-seven a month. And they have an average of anywhere from maybe thirteen to fifteen hundred. Now, of course, we would do a what, right now, we're paying three vehicle payments in one. But um, I, it averages about, it's fourteen-something, but fifteen hundred off, so let's say five hundred apiece. But I got, asked Christie to send me at the bank to send me, I mean, like this all transpired this afternoon. So I've asked her to send me a total on what's owed on all three vehicles, just to make sure that that payment of what we would take out of that. So easily, even if the payment for this new Tahoe was a couple of hundred dollars more, then easily the, the um, police department could absorb that. Because I know Barry's gonna be looking for a answer real quick because these are gonna go, they're already on their website, which means. You know, somebody else will be picking up on them quick. Um, the biggest thing that I've done this month is work on our court progress. Um, we did have court. Allison and I sat here and go, went through a ton of files, trying to figure out what will transfer and what will not. And so then comes the task of looking through the file and making sure that we have all the records and everything is accurate and in place. So that when I transfer to, or we transfer to Heflin. They're gonna be literally sitting there typing everything in their system, so it's gonna have to be a hundred percent. So that's where my time is being spent right now. We will have court once more here on uh, March, I think it's the eighteenth. We will not have a court in April and then everything will transfer by May first. I'll make a couple of physical runs to Heflin in between that time to take the files that we have ready. They've asked for actual um, hard copies, obviously, and not emails. But for me, that, I'm just working on court until we can get that off our plate.
Samantha, on the um, the business license thing, um, can you talk about that for just a minute about, you know. We got on the agenda to vote on it, but on the, on the um, um, business license ordinance.
Okay, that is, I, I know we've, we've hit on it before, but this reform act was in two thousand and six. It was something we should have adopted years ago and they just picked up on it at the state. And so this is not optional. We're not gonna be able to say, oh, we don't, we don't want to pass this. Now, can I change anything inside that? I can, but we've got to pass something. Um, before, I mean, honestly, I was supposed to do it by February. So he's, he's waiting. It will not affect us this year. They're, they've processed everything that's come through this year, but before next. They're, they've processed everything that's come through this year, but before next year, this has to be on the books. And I know we did talk about, um, last time, we kinda threw it out there, that we might wanna look at, um, sales, um, look at net income in certain places, but we are not. I looked at it, looked at it, looked at it, and y'all, the paperwork, I think, would require somebody to sit in there and look at it. Because the companies would have to turn in so much paperwork. I think we would work ourselves to death for not a lot of gain. So I think this is our opportunity to go up slightly on our fees. Like, we have some people in town that are paying thirty-five dollars for a business license and it's unheard of. So I did go up on some of the fees. Now, you can look at them, uh, it's very comparable. Like, I tried to, like, if this person was thirty-five, then I tried to go up to forty-five. And if this person was a hundred, go up to a hundred. I tried to do it the same across the board.
My question on this, I got to thinking about it today and, and I don't know the answer to it, so I'm gonna ask. Um, as I was looking through each bold thing, um, and I wanna note that, is, right. So if I got a, if I got a business, I got a contractor, somebody's building a house. And they're building a house and that contractor comes in to do the, the concrete. Does that contractor, under this license, under this ordinance, is that contractor that's coming for the concrete gonna have to come up here and get a business license?
I think it.
It should be doing it now.
Yeah. Correct.
Should've been, should've been.
But, and I, I was afraid that was gonna be the answer. How we enforce that? My thing here on like transportation, it goes down through your passenger transportation, charter, other vehicle transit service, limousine, charters, taxis. Is that Uber? Is that Lyft? How are we gonna know if I call an Uber and they come pick me up, but before they pick me up, that they have to have a business license? A lot of this, Trevor, is picked up by Avenue. Um, now, what we, what, what I got, this is all state-regulated, not where they just, all they do is just administer. But we do have the right to set that, whatever it is. Now, they know, um, my understanding, okay, they know who's doing this. Because they, anytime they do business here, was the insurance company, whether it's, uh, Uber or whoever, deliveries or whatever, they know that. For we have not known that in the past, they know it because they, they're, they're like subcontractors for the State of Alabama, you know, Department of Revenue. And they have an advantage that we didn't have in the past. We didn't know, um, what all was out there.
So since we've started using Avenue, have, did our business license fees, did our incoming parts by using them?
I don't know.
No. And I'll tell you why, because like, um, normally, in the past, for as many years as you can count, everybody's gotten a letter that says, hey, it's time for your business. And we missed that. We didn't get it. Avenue did not have it out. We were calling, calling, calling. They were not sending it out. Their response was always, well, it's not late till January thirty-first. So, and I'll just give you a quick example, like, normally here, this does not mean these people have not purchased a license. But normally here, we sold ninety, I wanna say seven last year, but less than a hundred, right at a hundred. And this year, I've sold thirty-three. Now, I can ride down through here and see some businesses that have not purchased from here, through our window, but they may have purchased on Avenue. We do have, I can see that on Avenue. But again, to Trevor's point, like, we don't have a business license police. So I can ride down the road and say, oh, well, I know they don't have one and I know they don't have one. But we have to take some of that, that we didn't send those letters out. So we can, we can definitely send the letters out. We can, we can send a letter to any business, any contractor that you see sitting on the side of the road. We can send those letters out. And within our group here, we just have to decide how far do we wanna take that? How much time you wanna spend doing it? But the one thing that we are gonna do differently this year, I think we should do, is we need to send those letters out. We have got to send those letters out. We have everybody's name, we have their address, and we've gotta send those letters out. Our sales, we cannot depend on Avenue to do that.
So they're not sending them until they're late?
Well, I, I'm gonna be honest, I think, and this is just my own personal opinion from having talked to them. I think we got in on the tail end of getting set up in their system. So they were spending so much time getting everybody input, because they were still asking me for lists when I got here in October. And those letters should've gone out in October, or even before October. So I think it was a setup. I think this coming year, you will see a big improvement in that. But in my opinion, we are gonna have to put our finger on it constantly and say, where, who you send letters to? Where did they go? Have you gotten any back? You know, like, I, I'm, we're just gonna have to, if we want it done accurately and a hundred percent. Because it's not fair, it's not fair to a business that's buying it and us turning the head to another business that doesn't have it. So I think we have some improvements to make this coming up year.
Waste management, are we charging waste management a business license?
I have not settled waste management one.
Advanced, yeah, or whatever that license was, you know, I've been doing it next week or, uh, so. And ambulance service, does, does Heflin charge ambulance, well, uh, an ambulance service, we're supposed to charge the ambulance service a hundred?
They're private, but ours isn't.
And I, I don't want to.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Well, now, that part is not optional, Trevor. You can't, you can't like take certain things out.
I know that's, I know that. But what I'm saying is that, you know, this, we're, we're gonna pick and choose if, capital I F, if we list all of these things. And who gets chosen to come in here? What if I see a contractor that, that made me mad on a house that I flipped two year ago and he's over here adding on? Good keep your contract license, but my old buddy, he's doing it up and down the road.
That's, that's up to you.
Well, I'm not gonna do it regardless, but I'm just saying, there's gonna be people in this town once, and we gotta pass the ordinance. This scares me, because I don't think I'm gonna ask Barry Nolan to go, hey, go tell that dude right over there.
Well, that's a decision like you guys will have to make as a group, but you have no options to have those things listed there. That came directly from the state. All of it has to be listed there. That's what they're waiting on.
Yeah, they couldn't believe we didn't have it. They couldn't believe that ours were sold out of there. Do we charge Amazon, UPS, FedEx?
We did get, we did get business licenses from all of them.
I'm sure I just saw that.
But now, all that goes through, like, Avenue. None of that would come through me here. The other item that I, I'm not sure that y'all are aware of, but I, I wasn't aware of, but insurance tax. Any insurance I'm talking about all over this country comes in constantly, like, starting January, normally the fifteenth. And what I understand from this guy is we, he's not asking me for a list until March. But last year, we made over ten thousand dollars on that. And you do nothing but sit there and watch the money roll in. Take a picture of the check and deposit it in your account. And that's about ten thousand dollars, or it was last year. I think we're up to maybe.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Uh, you might reach out to the appropriate judge's office on those license, because they also have to have a county license. Because the county and state licenses combined. So even if you got a business license, you're in Cleveland, in Ramburn, you also gotta have the county.
County license.
And far as the ambulance service, ambulance service is a government entity, so we don't like that.
That's fine. I was curious, you know, I don't wanna sit there and charge an ambulance service.
There are some private ones that are.
Now, you're right, yeah, there are some private, especially in your bigger cities.
And that's why it's listed.
Yeah, okay.
That is, that is how we do groups also. You have to have a, um, a state license, a county license, and whatever town you're in, you have to go and purchase that one. So, uh, without code enforcement. And you're not gonna get those, those licenses unless you have code enforcement, because, uh, it could not be a check.
You know, like, arts and sports, does, you know, what, someone wants to come in here and coach one or two kids? You know, he's getting paid or she's getting paid, because they have to have a business license.
Yes, I answered it. I answered a question this week. A guy called and he was coming into town to do one thing for one individual. And he said, do I have to have a business license? And I said, if you'd like to sell in Ramburn, Alabama, you certainly.
Good honest guy. Good honest guy.
Oh, you wouldn't, I mean, they do all the time. Like, we have good, honest people here. And they know about their county license, like, they come and say, well, now, I have to get my county license. Like, they know all those things and they're good, honest people that are just trying to make a living. And some of them do very little, but they still get that license every single year. Those are not options for us as far as passing this, um, ordinance. You don't, you, everybody has to have a business license that is State of Alabama law. The only thing that you can do is adjust your fees. That's it. And the list, honestly, is ten thousand long.
Uh, I think it'd be way more.
Oh, gosh, yeah. But what, that's why they suggest, I started out, y'all, working on it, the NACs code is ten, six digits long, sometimes as many as ten. But what they do is they narrowed it down with those three digits, so that you're kind of in a, in a broad sense. And you can just put those three digits down and they will accept that. Um, from my old job, I was used to the six, so I started out trying to do that and I thought, I'm kinda leaving all kinds of people out. So I had to group so that it's a more general sense. And there probably are some that we could mark off of our list. They will still have to have a business license and I just have to look it up, you know, every single time. Basically, that list is just the suggested list by State of Alabama. But I did go through all of our business licenses from last year and make sure that every single person that we sold to last year has a category. So that when they come into our office, it's easy to say, oh, yeah, there you are. And I've given them that code, so that no matter who's sitting there, they'll be able to say that's what they should be coded. Because in the past too, like, we might sell you a business license for this, this, and this, and it, anyway. I, I've gotten it a little bit more down pat, I think. I think this coming up year, we're gonna be in real good shape.
Anything else? Yeah. Okay. Well, that being said, we're gonna drop down to the old business down here. And we have this ordinance that Samantha got from the state, the one that y'all were looking at or whatever. Um, but we need to vote to adopt this, uh, ordinance, uh, in accordance with the Business License Reform Act of two thousand and six, which was required by the State of Alabama. So. I hear a motion that we adopt this, um, ordinance. I'll make a motion. We got a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second.
Okay, and Christie?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
Oh, Rodney, I'm sorry. I've been asking you to not do it, because I omitted you. Okay, now, y'all, well, I'll have to go through the ordinance process with that. So it'll have to be posted and it's a zillion pages, so I've got to figure that process out. But look for it in the next couple of days. I don't know if I'll just clip it together and I'll, I'll figure it out though. But it'll have to be posted and I'll leave it posted for about thirty days. And then next year, let's really do a good job of getting these letters out, putting it on Facebook, everything that we can do to help the business owners here not be as confused as they were this year.
Okay. All right, um, the next is, um, we need, we've got a resolution that we got here to, to, uh, sell the senior center van as, um, surface property, as surface property. And, um, we've got a resolution for that and, um, we just need to vote on this resolution to do this, to do, to deal with the surface property.
Are we talking about the bus?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, the bus. She put down, but it's a bus. I'm sorry.
Have you had changed Dr. Matt Gross?
Yes, and he said that, uh, he would try to help us as much as he could. It would, you know, we could put it on GovDeals, uh, we could put it on, uh, Facebook Marketplace, that's where it came from anyway, was Facebook Marketplace.
Am I wrong in thinking, I know they did some fundraisers for that, but am I wrong in thinking somebody donated nine thousand dollars?
Yeah, the State of Alabama.
Okay, it was the State of Alabama, not an individual.
No, the State of Alabama Department. It's the senior, the senior part of State of Alabama.
And if we sell that, we'll take that money to buy a, a passenger van?
Yes, uh-huh, yes. And then the rest of the money, we just probably go in and put it up senior center account. Okay.
We only wanna get rid of it if we can get something else, because we do use it. I mean, they love going places. That's the only reason why we would wanna get rid of it if we got something.
And you know, I'm just sitting here thinking, um, out loud, and I probably shouldn't input my opinion, but if we can sell it for over what we could buy a van for, then we can look at another car, because the car has, I mean, it's bought, and we've had people look at. So just keep that in mind too, that that, I, I wanna, I'll put that in the minutes, that we're gonna use it to go back. Yeah, I mean, is that what y'all want me to do?
Yeah, yeah. I just want everybody to know that, that the town didn't sell it and get any profit, that it was sold to buy something else for the seniors. And then anything left over is also for the seniors. Because it was donated and fundraisers for the seniors, so we wanna make sure that everybody knows that that's where it's gonna go.
And I'll put that in the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And it actually could be, uh, when I talked to Matt Gross and Mac had a bid on that, on that, uh, for forty-two thousand dollars. He said, that's a fifty-thousand-dollar bus. And he said, I made an offer for forty-two, and he said, then it didn't go. And then we come along and it's on Facebook Marketplace and we got it for thirty. One went up to look at and everything, and they found out it was for the senior center. And they let us have thirty, I think it was thirty-two.
Yeah, gosh.
It was thirty-two. So we got a great deal on it, so it's, there's no telling what it's actually worth. Um, we just have to wait and see, you know? Um, it's, it's actually worth more than thirty-three for sure, you know? So whatever we can get for it. So, um, I hear a motion that we accept this resolution. I'll make a motion. We got a motion? I hear a second.
Second.
Got a second.
And Christie?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
And Rodney?
Okay, yes. Okay. The next one is the, um, the resolution to, uh, dispose of the surface property of the senior center Kia that was donated to us back, back like last year maybe, I don't remember. And, uh, so anyway, the motor's blown up on it, so it's gonna cost more to fix it than it's worth. Um, so we're gonna, we need to make some arrangement. I really haven't looked into see how much we could get for it or anything like that. I haven't had a chance to, to do that, but we would need to do that, okay? Um, and it would be a surface property and, um, and all we have to do is have a resolution to do that, to get, to get rid of surface property for the town. I'll make a motion. So we got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Christie?
Yes.
And Dennis?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now we're down to the, the thing here, the, a lawful regulation to sell the K nine. Um, the K nine is considered to be town property, um, and it's an asset of the town, because we gave more than what it takes for it to be an asset. Um, so therefore, we're in a process trying to resolve this issue on the dog. We might, we've had an offer made, uh, of three thousand dollars. Um, and we would also, um, we'd, we'd also have to have a way. we'd, we'd also have to have away with liability, which is required, uh, to be signed to, to reduce our community kind of liability to town. Um, so, around our county said they did not want to do it, so, uh, we just need a, a motion to accept the sale of the dog for three thousand dollars, and, um, that has been made. And, um, I just need a motion that we accept the resolution to, to dispose of this, um, circle's property, because that's really what it is, but the dog is an asset of the town, and therefore, by revolution, we can, we can let it go.
I'll make a motion.
All right, we got a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, in a second.
And Dennis?
Yes.
Mitzi?
Yes.
And Rodney?
Okay. Um, I, I wrote this down here on the U business, um, tell my Barry situation is a time sensitive thing. It wasn't on the agenda, but since it is a time sensitive matter about the vehicle, uh, we need to probably move on that, because we, if we can't, if we wait, we're gonna miss out on that deal on the, on the vehicle. And we gotta have a, a vehicle for offer that's dependable.
I don't see we have a choice.
And plus, we've already determined, I think Sam's done determined, that we, we got the funds to do it. Um, you know, we get a half percent sales tax that's, that comes in to, for the vehicles, um, it's paying for the three we got right now, has been ever since day one. So, um, she's done figured on that we can trade that one in, but we're gonna have to do it quickly, because if we don't, we're gonna lose out on these, and they're very, very hard to come back. We just, we're lucky right now that, that they do, because in the past, the only place you could get a circle, that you could get a vehicle to the state debt system is that, um, being somewhere like, um, for, that were the only ones that did it.
Do we ever have, and I'm just asking, because I don't know, do we ever have two officers on call at one time?
Well, we haven't, you know, what I'm saying, we have not.
I'm just wondering, how many vehicles do we need?
Three.
I mean, does every?
We got one for Brian, we got one, um, the, um, the one that, um, Daniel's driving was the former chief, and, and, um, it's, um, it was paid for COVID, COVID money. I don't know if y'all remember that or not, if you did do that. Um, the, um, the other one, um, let's say Brian's got one, um, and then Barry's got the truck, okay? And then, um, we gotta have that, the, the one, the other one is not right. There's something wrong with it, and they can't figure it out. So, we can't put them in that one, you know, um, so.
Well, I mean, I was just asking that if two, I mean.
Christie, they drive their vehicles home.
Yeah.
And then, when they hit the line, they go in service. They drive, that, that's.
That's just, uh-huh.
Yeah, and that's.
I'd like to say something on that, too, like, just like, say, me, I'm at home, I get called from home. I had to answer. Friday night, I got home from working over here. I'd been home, laid down in bed thirty minutes, and they called me back out. I had to leave from my house. It was actually a county call, but he was in Borden, and the call was in Trickle. So, they called me back out to go take care of the call for him. So, I mean, it's, if we don't have vehicles, that's a pay cut, and officers will quit. And then, it's, um, like, I gotta respond from home. I gotta come all the way here, pick up a vehicle, and go all the way back, plus, I've got certain things in my vehicle. I got my guns, my ammo, my things in my vehicle, and if I'm gonna have to take them out every, every shift, that's aggravating.
Often, better police officers, that's why I was asking.
Well, every one of us got a little bit of, every one of us got a little bit of something different, and got it set up different, and, you know, I've got my personal guns in there, I've got ammo cans in there, you know? People says, why you got so much ammo? Well, you never know when you're gonna need it. Like I tell them, I'd rather be prepared than not prepared. You know, a lot of it may be overboard, but it's, you know, where we're living in today, you don't know what's gonna happen, you know?
Well, I hear a motion that we, um, allow Barry to proceed with the purchase of a vehicle for, um, the new option.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion, in a second.
I wasn't ready for that one.
I'm sorry.
Okay, and Trevor?
Yes.
Christie? And Rodney?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, um, now, um, we need to, um, determine a date for the agenda for work session. We got a lot of things to discuss, um, and we're gonna do it as, as soon as we can, I guess, you know? So, we'll be prepared to, um, make a move on it if possible at the next, um, council meeting, if possible.
So, do we have other items to discuss other than these two?
Um, I, I'll, I'll just tell you what I, we had been talking here, and I've listed out the body cams for the police department. And then, of course, you have the, the land purchase, purchased by the rent department, and then the.
Building.
The building purchase. You've got to vote on this tax abatement, so I'm assuming y'all are gonna have some discussion on that before you vote. Um, and that, that's all I have, that I had just, I just made little notes here, so I'll be sure to have it.
Of course, anytime that you have something else you want to, that you think we need to discuss at the, um, work session.
Well, I, and I don't know if it's, if it's proper to say this here or not, but anyway, I'm gonna say it. As far as, like, with the, the money from the K nine, ten thousand dollars, I have gotten feedback from, you know, the public that donated and all, and I'm not in charge of it, don't want to be in charge of it, but I'm just repeating what I've heard multiple people say that helped buy this dog, is that that money go back into the police department in some form or fashion.
It would.
Like, you know.
It'd have to.
Body count, I mean, if you buy a body count.
That's what I was fixing to say, why wouldn't we?
I would want everybody to know that, that the town did not put that in the general fund and go savings.
Well, look, why don't I do that same, Christie, why don't I do that same thing that we were talking about, money going back in? Why don't I, are y'all okay with me add that into our minutes, that the sale of the K nine money goes back into the police department? Are y'all okay with that? Okay, I'll add that same, that way it's in our minutes, and we all understand.
Is there a date that y'all want to do this? I mean, we're pretty much, um, if I look at their calendar, pretty available most of the time, anyway, from right here.
All right, y'all are tired people, keep your mouth shut. Me, too, I think.
I've got a bottle of gas.
I usually can, you know, after hours, um, except, of course, on a Friday night, uh, the eighth is the only thing I can't do. So, any other time in the after hours is okay for me.
We can do it, whatever time, you know, we, we say, whatever, you know?
Trevor's normal, but what time do you get into, back into town, though, Trevor?
I'm back easy, I can be here four o'clock, Georgia time. On down, you stay away from us, March eleventh. Yeah.
No. Get a little play.
Yeah, I know it. Most of the time, I'm just glad to have it.
Right, what time could you be here, Mitzi, though?
Uh, I'm through about four, I'll win ten.
Okay, so five, Georgia, with five, if, if we agree on a time, it's five, Georgia? Okay.
Dennis will be done in one.
Dennis, could you do, I'm sorry, can you do five, Georgia, or no? If you can't say so, five, Georgia.
What nation name?
What day? What day was that?
That'll be up to you, Dennis, because I think the rest of them's approved.
What is it, ten o'clock?
Seven.
It may be a week here.
That's a seven.
And we're not, we're not getting all, all the work done. I own that.
Fifteen, sixteen.
The fifteenth is a Friday.
No, I said, no, that.
Friday's not good, too. Governor, there's a week.
Y'all just make a date.
All right, so our next city councilman is gonna be on the twenty-fifth, correct? That's the last Monday of the month, that's the fourth Monday.
Okay.
All right, so, do we want to do it a week in advance, or we gonna do it a week and a half in advance?
It doesn't matter, we just whatever.
I won't, I won't say the eighteenth. That would give us a week before, or move it to the week prior to that, and, and go like the twelfth, or the fourteenth.
Are we on a timeline with this abatement? Okay, talk to us.
I mean, as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Well, I'm gonna have to go to the next council meeting, anyway, because I've got twenty-three.
When she and I were talking, you know, we have done, like, a, a work session, and then.
Going to the second.
And then go, and then a, a meeting.
We can't, we can't, unless we have a call meeting.
That's what I'm saying, like, just say, for instance, if we say we're gonna have a work session, March the twelfth, at five.
Eighteenth's court.
But it's over by five, Georgia.
You busy, that thing.
You know, town, um, work session at five, and town meeting.
Have like a call meeting?
Uh-huh, so that we'd have time to discuss it and then vote on it. I don't know, I knew that you were talking about that it was time sensitive.
Can you wait till the twenty-fifth?
I mean, wait, but wait, I mean, you, you guys are in the driver's seat here, so, you know, it's just money to tree brand, you know?
We can wait.
Can wait, okay.
Yeah, we can wait, we can wait. Good day.
We don't want to be a problem.
Okay. All right, so we're doing on the, what'd you say?
Eighteenth?
March eighteen.
We'll go out, I'll let it.
Jamie, can you make that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, good deal. Okay, so, at this time, I'm gonna ask for during the meeting.
I'll make a motion to during the meeting.
All right, I've got a motion.
So, the other two items on U business, we're not gonna discuss those.
But what number?
Spend the cow.
No, we're gonna do that in the work session. Okay.
Okay, now, who's second, closing the meeting?
I, I.
You made a motion?
Yeah, Mitzi made a motion.